Good afternoon, going to call back into session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting, July 11th, 2017, and I thank folks who are here for timely for your 2 o'clock items, and obviously we're still in the midst of hearing the morning item, but we're going to return this afternoon, complete the morning agenda, and certainly go back into the afternoon agenda, and I don't think it'll be real long, but appreciate your patience in any regard. So with that Flo, I turn you to call and roll, establish a quorum, please.
Okay Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters, Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thanks, and I understand Supervisor Peters will be joining us, she is trying to conclude a telephone call of great importance, so, okay, with that then if we'll go back to the morning items, I know we held over a few of those, and then we'll proceed accordingly, so.
Okay, so we're going to start with item 66, that's the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District Zone 4 Public Hearing on Proposed Assessment for Fiscal Year 2017-18, Also Adopt Resolution Confirming the Assessment Diagram and Leveing Assessments.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Supervisors. I'm Ken Wick, I'm with the Department of Transportation, have a brief presentation on the Landscape Maintenance District Zone 4 Assessment, if someone could bring up the presentation.
They're getting it ready in the background, pull it up in just one second. What's, who's talking?
Is that slowly and I'll say.
Ken Wick from Transportation.
Somebody else was talking. There you go.
Oh, I think Flo was trying to get the item up, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just letting him know that they were working on his PowerPoint presentation in the back.
Okay, there you go, you're all set.
Good, here we go, on May, let's see if it works, good, it works, on May 23rd, the Board, or, May 23rd, 2017, the Board of Supervisors approved the Engineers' Report for the District and adopted a resolution of intent to levy and collect assessments, the resolution set the public hearing for today, therefore, the purpose is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed levy and adopt a resolution levying the assessments, and the Board action requested per the resolution is to confirm, is to confirm the assessment diagram and to levy the assessments for fiscal year 2017-18. A little bit of background, the District provides funding for maintenance for roadway frontages, roadway medians, and the District maintains about 2 million square feet of landscape areas. This is the assessment diagram, or one of the assessment diagrams, and the District, a little bit of background, the District was formed in 1994, and is currently comprised of 19 different geographical areas, the red areas in the diagram, and the landscape areas and the antelope area constitute about 90% of the District. The District is maintained through a full-service maintenance contract, which fertilizes trees and shrubs, prunes trees and shrubs, mows turf, removes debris and weeds, replaces trees and shrubs, manages and repairs irrigation systems, and improves aged landscape areas by replacing plants, irrigation systems, things like that. Water conservation is not directly related to the assessment, but is a topic that we'd like to share some information on, so, staff closely monitors the irrigation application by the contractor, the irrigation is applied to promote a healthy appearance, and we do focus on the health of the trees, the, a major asset to the, to the landscape district for conservation efforts, we do mulching to conserve moisture, we also do retrofits, our landscape retrofits, including drought tolerant plants, and we do contractor oversight of the irrigation, the mulching, and the retrofits. The District has provided consistent services with the same assessment rate for the last 23 consecutive years, those current assessment rates are $42.50 per parcel annually for residential properties, $66.51 per acre annually for commercial properties, the total assessment will provide a revenue of $500,000, and Proposition 218 limits those rates, and a ballot process is required if you want to raise the assessment rates. Revenue, the revenue collected through the property assessments alone do not provide adequate funding, the assessments, the assessment funding has not increased for the last 23 years due to Prop 218, which passed in 1996, I believe, and the proposed road fund contribution for fiscal year 2017-18 is $385,000 to bridge the shortfall. The District, or, I'm sorry, the Department of Transportation has retained hairs and associates to analyze the District's structure and to make recommendations for restructuring and assessment rates, these recommendations on District restructuring are anticipated by the end of 2017. Therefore, we ask the Board to conduct the public hearing, to hear testimony, and to consider written protests in regard to the proposed levy assessments, we also ask the Board to adopt the resolution confirming the assessment diagram and to levy assessments for fiscal year 2017-18, are there any questions?
Okay, thanks for your presentation, any questions of staff on this, all right, Ms. Frost?
When I was on the City Council in Citrus Heights, we reviewed some of our public areas and tried to find ways to save money on that landscaping by making changes, are we doing that kind of stuff at the county?
Are you, are you referring to retrofits and things like that?
Yeah, like, you know, replace grass with, you know, drought tolerant plants that don't require mowing every week, and, you know, that kind of thing, just ways to cut costs.
Yes, excuse me for interrupting, yes, so the simple answer is yes, so, we're replacing, or when the plants die or need replacement of the trees, we're focusing on drought tolerant plants, and when the irrigation system needs to be retrofitted or upgraded, that's going to be, you know, something that's modern, and also there's, I know there's a difference between turf and shrubs and trees, so we can install landscaping or irrigation system that can, you know, handle or water those differently, I think maybe, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it out, we were able to save quite a bit by just changing the landscape a little bit and reducing the amount of grass and ongoing maintenance to those areas, so.
I, yeah, we, yeah, we are doing it, so we are, when we do things, we are using the drought tolerant plants, yes.
Thanks.
One question I had was that, I know that from time to time we have, the oversight we provided to contractors, we have problems in certain areas, are we able to recover some of those, being, again, I don't know how those contracts are monitored, I know we look at the irrigation, but, no specific contractor, but over time, I know I've made inquiries about items I've seen in the District, and, you know, the answer comes back, well, we've had, took our, you know, issue with, you know, a part of our contract on that, so how do we recover costs, because they get paid on a monthly basis?
They do get paid on a monthly basis, so if they're not performing, I mean, the first thing you do is, you know, send them what, what is the issue, I think in the past, it has risen to the level of non-payment, so maybe if that's your question, that it can go to that level.
Okay, well, again, it's important, because again, we're, you know, that's what we're contracting for, and, you know, if you lose large trees, if it were that severe, then that's, you know, that has additional consequences, but if the, you know, if weeds aren't being mowed, or, you know, there's some aesthetic elements that need to be cared for in the center medians, if that's the case, and/or, you know, from time to time, things get hit in the roadway, there's, they get in their contract, and they get reimbursed for replacement plant materials and so forth, you know, all those are going to be done timely, and I know obviously that's what, you know, you and your shop oversee, and again, if they, you know, aren't performing, then, you know, give them a chance to correct it if it's not too severe, but they certainly need to give us the value for the, you know, for the cost allocation and reimbursement we're providing them for, so.
To answer your question, excuse me, staff is out there regularly, or, on a routine basis, inspecting these locations and providing or monitoring the irrigation, like, you know, the weeds and sending them notification to make sure they're, they're performing, the question regarding downed trees, you know, if a tree, if there's a vehicle accident, then we do pursue recovery of the tree.
Right, from the motorists, if in fact, you know, who did it, so, okay, all right, any other questions, if not, then thanks for the presentation, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to address this item, item 66, the assessment diagram for Zone 4 Landscape Maintenance District, all right, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board then for a motion in action.
Give approval.
Okay, Chair would second it, moving second then to approve the staff recommendation, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, next item.
Okay, our next item is 68, Public Hearing to Proceed with Projects and Levy Assessments in Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency for Fiscal Year 2017-18.
Flo, let me just, again, Michael, if you want to just bear with me, could we take the Florin P. Bitt item, because I know we have folks in the audience that are waiting on that one, so if you just hold for a second, we're going to get a report out, so, maybe we call that item, call the 67.
That's the item 69.
69, yes.
Okay, Florin Road Property and Business Improvement District, Public Hearing on the Renewal of the District and the Levy of Assessments, Tabulation of Assessment Ballots, and Adopt Resolutions Renewing the District and Authorizing the Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 17-18.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Davidson.
Good afternoon, Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division, and I'm pleased to report that the Manager of Special Districts conducted the tabulation of the ballots, and there, the result is, is that the, a majority of the ballots received were in favor, so there is no majority protest, and we did not receive written protests that would make a majority protest, so now at this time, your Board may adopt the two resolutions that are before you, I do want to point out that in the resolution renewing the District, there's a couple of blanks that do need to be filled in, in Section 2, it should read, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received zero written protest, and Section 3 should read that, the Board had received 93 assessment ballots totaling 59.71% of the total assessment to be levied, of which 75.87% was in favor of the assessment, and 24.13% were in opposition, and so with that, that completes information that needs to be filled in there, the, like I said, the result was 75% of the ballots received were in favor, and you may now, if you choose, adopt the resolution renewing the District and the resolution authorizing the levy of assessments for fiscal year 17-18.
Okay, thanks Bob, Mr. Kennedy, you, okay. All right, so moving second then to approve the levy of the assessments and the tabulation, acknowledging that in the resolution, in adopted resolution, anyone wish to speak to this item, all right, Cory, do you want to come forward?
I'm slow.
It's okay, I've been waiting for a while.
I broke my knee in February.
Oh, I just did it today, thank goodness.
I just wanted to say thank you very much to the Board of Supervisors, and of course our Board of Directors and all the supporters, Sacramento County was a delight to work with through this process, so, we're very grateful, and we're glad to move forward, we've got some big, big plans for 10 years, so, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for sharing the video this morning, too, so, keep the Pink Panther working out there, so, all right, with that, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, okay, now, Mr. Peterson.
Now we can go to item 68, Public Hearing to Proceed with Projects and Levy Assessments in Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency for Fiscal Year 17-18.
Okay, Michael.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson, Director of Department of Water Resources, May 23rd, your Board passed a resolution of intent setting today as a hearing to consider proceeding with projects and levy assessments for Zone 13, Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency is a property-based assessment that is used to fund long-range drainage and water supply planning efforts, it does not fund capital projects or operational costs of either the drainage or the water supply maintenance operations, collects approximately 2 point, just under 2.3 million annually, the assessment doesn't change year to year with the, other than when land use has changed, as it's a land use-based assessment, so there's very little change year to year in how much revenue is, is collected through the Zone 13 assessment. Some of the key things that Zone 13 is funding includes the administration of the FEMA program, participation in the community rating system, and the National Flood Insurance Program, the large focus this year and last year as well has been related to groundwater management and the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, ensuring that, that the groundwater bases in the county will come into compliance with the state regulations on groundwater management. Overall, the, the budget between this year and last year has increased about $350,000, that's associated with the increasing effort related to sustainable groundwater management activities, and, other than, you know, additional highlights in terms of the use of the funds also, this supports our efforts in the Delta, the Water Fix engagement on the Delta tunnels, and the petition hearings that have been going on with the Water Board in regard to moving the point of diversion for the Delta tunnels projects, I don't know if you have any specific questions as it relates to the use of the funding or items in the budget.
Okay, thanks, Michael, so what was it, your last point about the point of diversion and where's that in the budget?
Oh, that's, 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 that's under the legal services, I'm sorry, that's under the legal services, that was, that's support.
That $558,000?
Yeah, general engagement from a legal standpoint with the Delta tunnels, the Water Fix, and that hearing process.
Okay, so, I was curious, because all I saw was this Delta consultant.
Right, no, that's, I'm sorry, that was.
$50,000 line out above, but I didn't know where, I was.
Other than, other than staff cost, the primary cost for that is under the legal services, that's, that's what I was referring to.
Okay, and could I ask Nav or Krista, so are we going to be having a closed session item, potentially, on Delta stuff fairly shortly?
We will, as the State's working through and working with Michael in his office, we'll bring something to the Board.
Because I guess the record decision's anticipated shortly, and there's a window of time, which will probably have a legal response addition, anything we've been doing on the, on the State Water Board, that's one thing, but certainly the federal decision, which is.
Right, we are, we're anticipating that and bringing that to closed session.
Okay, all right, okay, because I know that County Council's office sent some information in advance of that, before the break, Board breaks, so, okay, all right, I don't have any questions, any questions by Board members, if not, then with that, I would open a public hearing, anyone wish to address this, item, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I would move adoption to resolution for Zone 13 for 17-18 fiscal year. Okay, moving second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay.
Okay, and then our final morning item is item 70, Resolution of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Action to Acquire Real Property for the Old Florintown Streetscape Improvement Phase 2 Project, the heirs and divices of and all persons claiming by through or under Vivian Josephine Whipple, deceased, located on the north side of Florin Road, the environmental document is initial study addendum.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the Board, I'm Mike Turner, Chief of the Real Estate Division, and I'm here to very briefly introduce this item, which recommends Board approval of a resolution necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interests for two easements for the Old Florintown Streetscape Improvement Phase 2 Project from Powerin Road to Florin Perkins Road, the project involves the installation of sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, and streetscape improvements within the Old Florintown Main Street corridor, improvements include drainage improvements, possible sewer connection, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, bike lanes, transit stops, decorative streetlights, landscaping, and other streetscape enhancements, the subject property is actually a 40-foot wide strip used as a private road to a number of parcels from Florin Road and from Florin Perkins Road, the parcel is 40 feet wide, approximately 890 feet long, and contains approximately 33,977 square feet, the property interests required for the project are an easement for public roadway and public utilities consisting. utilities consisting of sixteen-hundred square feet, and an easement for temporary construction consisting of three-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet. Both of these easements are located at the southern terminus of Edith Street at Florin Road. The county obtained an appraisal from an independent appraiser, and commensurate with that appraisal, the county presented an offer to the deceased owner's representative. As required by law, the county also informed the representative of their right to obtain an independent appraisal, for which the county will pay up to, up to five thousand dollars, subject to certain conditions. I mentioned that the owner of record of the subject property, Vivian Josephine Whipple, is deceased. County staff have been, made multiple contacts with the representative of the owner's estate, and although he is amenable to the county's offer, he does not currently have the legal authority to convey the specified easement interest to the county. Consequently, an eminent domain action is necessary to secure the interest required for the project. The findings required to support the recommended resolution and necessity are set forth in the board letter for this item. If you have questions regarding the project, I, there's, project engineer from Department of Transportation is here.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Supervisor Frost punched up, I just wanted to ask you a question, though, going into that. So is there going to be an improvement? Anybody that's been on Edith Street knows the condition of that. It may be a private easement that, you know, allows access to a couple of homes to the, to the north there. So what is contemplated with this beyond the widening that would occur on the Florin Road frontage, but going back interior, because I would think that there might be some benefit for the purpose by which people use that for access. At least the last time I was recall being in that part of the, of the county, that road was pretty, pretty rough shape. It's basically a kind of a private drive, gravelled, looks like it might have had some asphalt at one time, but it's not. So are we going to do, is there going to be any improvements apart of this project?
Actually, the, the project engineer is here, Stan Sorenson, he can answer that in more detail than, than I'm able to.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman. This, across this parcel, the private road, what we will be doing is putting in curb, gutter, and sidewalk. That will be in the PUPFE, and we'll have a driveway connection so that access to this private road will be maintained. It's just that this, the sidewalk, the new sidewalk and any utilities will be in that, the new easement that we'll acquire across the frontage.
Does a Whipple estate own the property going, it does, northerly, or for a portion, and it's used as a private easement? Has there been any discussion, because obviously any compensation's going to go to the estate, and it'll be dispersed, however it's dispersed, I guess, because in select, there wasn't any heirs or any will, so it's going to be probate. So would there be a public benefit on this private property to actually doing some improvement, assuming there was, you know, I don't know if, is there, there's an older home there, if I recall? I don't know who resides, does the grandson reside in the home?
No, the grandson has not reside there.
So, so, but does somebody live in that home, or is the home vacant, since she's, the lady's deceased?
I, I, I don't know who occupies the home.
There is a home on the property, right? Is this, you mean, or is it just an easement without any?
The, the property in question is simply, it's a private road. It has no.
That's, that's the only lot right there?
Yes.
Okay, and, but does it connect to something to the north?
It, it connects to Florin Perkins on the east.
Comes, it comes around, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a L-shaped.
Right, L-shaped, right. So the only piece of property that we're dealing with here is just, is just the portion, this forty-foot strip, that's what the Whipple's, that's what Mrs. Whipple owned before she passed away?
Correct.
And there was no attachment to any residential property as a part of that, then?
No, it, it standalone parcel.
Okay, so it's standalone.
Actually, most of the, the roadway easement is, you know, county maintained already, I think roughly twelve-hundred of the sixteen-hundred square feet is already essentially part of the roadway.
So I guess maybe just ask a question more simply then, would it be smart to try to acquire the entirety of the parcel and bring it into the system and then maintain that? Because it does provide some public access. I guess that, if it's just as remnant parcel, which I didn't know till you just explained that, why wouldn't we just look at acquiring the whole parcel? Otherwise, you're going to have a remnant piece that just, kind of that connector between the, the public portion of the street, so why wouldn't we just look at acquiring the whole thing? And again, because it's going to, they, it's going to go to the estate anyway. Would that not make sense?
Yeah, that's something Department of Transportation.
Supervisor, it's been a little while since I've looked at the map on this, and I apologize that I haven't really refreshed right before the.
Well, yeah, because I can't, these maps are very helpful.
My understanding is this is, this is a roadway access that goes off of Florin, goes up and to the north and into the east, and there wouldn't be any public benefit that I can see that we would want to acquire the existing driveway slash roadway access to the north beyond the Florin Road project limits. We would wind up, if we acquired that, we would wind up then taking that into the maintained road system for the county, and having to then upgrade that system. And I, I don't really see with this project a need that we would do that for that private benefit to those properties in the north. Just, that may, that may be the question you're asking.
Well, it is, but again, anybody's familiar with, you know, Old Town Florin, and certainly it's in this portion of Supervisor Serna's district, but is that, you know, you had an old street pattern there where you had small, kind of, you know, neighborhood pods there, and, you know, somebody built a house, and then there was this alleyway and so forth and so on. What I see is an opportunity, again, without having perfect recollection of how that lines out, is that, you know, otherwise, it will just, we'll do an improvement, it'll have this kind of alleyway driveway, and there's, you know, we're going to spend a couple million bucks on this Florin Road project, why not acquire the property and bring it into the system? I mean, I can't imagine it's a big maintenance headache.
Again, I don't see a need or an interest that the county would acquire the private driveway interest up to these other properties. We would still be able to provide adequate and actually upgraded connection from that roadway to Florin Road. So we're talking about going across the frontage of that, which you can see if you, if you're maybe Googling it now. Again, I don't really see a reason that we would want to acquire a private driveway access to properties north of Florin as a part of this project.
Yeah, it's not the Florin.
No, but, but you're not going to provide access to which residence, though?
Well, to these residences.
No, I understand that.
I do have one other map, if this.
Yeah, and so you get the through access, so it's that L-shaped, it turns into Varney Avenue. Yeah, and you're looking at, and there's a, there's a couple gravel sections there, just, I mean, so, but I heard there was public access in there, is there not public access? So Varney and Edith, there is no public access?
Those are both private driveways, and they access.
That wasn't kind of how I heard it explained, though. I heard it was going to, that was part of it was publicly maintained, but.
At the south end, maybe, right, at Florin?
Yes.
Yeah, so, short of what the distance is that we're going to be acquiring, we'd be acquiring sixteen-hundred feet roughly, and we're, we're actually maintaining about twelve-hundred feet in that same geographic area, so.
I guess my point being, when you have older improvements, you have very, you know, a setting that, you know, that worked fine in nineteen forty, maybe works okay in two-thousand and seventeen, is that you ought to look at the opportunity to, to upgrade the system, otherwise it'll never, it'll never happen. Because, I mean, Phase Two's only been fifteen years in, in, in the making, or maybe getting closer to twenty years now. I guess if there was an opportunity to do that improvement, to get it into the system, it would be smart, in my view, because at some point in time, we, you know, we're trying to get water and sewer and have for a long time, and road improvements that complement that, you know, and there are properties that are served off of Varney and Edith, and, you know, and here you have an estate that's not going to dispute it, so why wouldn't you do that? Even if you didn't make the improvement right now, I guess, that'd be my point, so. But I'm going to leave it to Mr. Serna, and I guess Supervisor Frost had a question, too, so.
I just had a question relating to, since we're, this is eminent domain, and the grandson was not in the will or the trust, so he wasn't qualified to sign off on the property, but where does the money go? He's the only surviving relative. Does he get the money?
Initially, the, the money would go to the State Treasurer Condom Nation Fund while County Council files the eminent domain action. At some point, whoever, we're not a hundred percent sure it's the grandson that is the sole heir, that would all have to be sorted out.
Okay.
So somebody would be entitled to at least the amount deposited.
So there's a, we'll proactively try to figure out who that belongs to, so they can benefit by it?
Yes, mostly County Council, if the eminent domain action is filed.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
I had that same question, by the way, in the briefing, so.
Okay. All right, I've asked my questions, and anything else? Okay, we have a motion.
Move the item.
Okay. Give a second to approve the item. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, next item, please. That's morning session, so I'll go to, to the afternoon-evening session.
Okay, so for item seventy-two, it's the Garcia Rivera Time Extension Project. This is a request for a five-year time extension for a vesting tentative subdivision map to divide ten-point-one acres into eighty-six residential lots in the RD-ten zone for a property located at seven-three-six-one Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental determination is an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Moffett, your county planning director. I do not have a PowerPoint on this item. This site is within the North Vineyard Station specific plan. It's generally in the center area of that specific plan. It's approximately ten acres. The project was initially approved by the board quite a number of years ago, and so the applicant is seeking an additional five-year extension as a result of the downturn in the economy and the long time that it's taking to see build out of this area. The site is zoned RD-ten. The lots, it's a fairly, relatively small site for this particular geography. The CPAC vote had been six to zero, and the Planning Commission vote was five to zero on the extension, and so staff is recommending approval. And as with some of the prior items, the rezone was, has been in effect for a number of years, and that original rezone did have the please-CFD condition on it. So the item is ready for your consideration.
Okay, thanks. Project applicant, representative, wish to comment on this at all? Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Bruce.
Nothing else, then? Anyone wish to address this? Seeing no one, then, bring it back to the board. I would move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thanks.
Your next item, seventy-three, An Extension of the Urgency Ordinance Amending Chapters Five and Seven of the Sacramento County Zoning Code Relating to Accessory Dwelling Units Due to Recent Changes in State Law.
Good afternoon, board members. Chris Bohley, Principal Planner.
Chris, do we need a presentation?
I, I don't, you were just going to, going to talk about the extension. I don't think we need, you're not, there's no full presentation, I think you were just going to.
I was just going to move for approval.
Okay, all right, Chris.
It's fine with me.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. Thank you for the brief report, Mr. Bohley. Anyone wish to address this item? Seeing none, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
I will stay up here for the next item.
And he's got the next one, too.
Okay, item seventy-four, An Ordinance Amending the Arden Oaks Neighborhood Preservation Area Related to Side and Rear Yard Setbacks for Non-Habitable Accessory Structures. Sorry.
All right, good afternoon. I do have a PowerPoint presentation for, for this item.
Okay, we have a couple of speakers on it as well.
Okay. Good afternoon, once again. It's my pleasure to present this item for your consideration, which is an ordinance amending the Arden Oaks Neighborhood Preservation Area. The ordinance before you is the result of about nine months of collaborative work between county staff and the Arden Oaks Neighborhood Association to craft amendments to the NPA related to accessory structures development standards with the goal of establishing clarity while meeting the interests of a majority of the residents, or majority of the Arden Oaks property owners. As a reminder, this map shows the boundaries of the Arden Oaks Neighborhood, which is located just east of Watt Avenue and north of Arden Way, and includes two-hundred-and-seventy-eight properties. Importantly, seventy properties are considered bordered lots in, in that either they're rear or side yards, border properties that are outside of the neighborhood preservation area. In October twenty-sixteen, the board adopted a resolution of intention directing staff to amend the Arden Oaks NPA to clarify accessory structure development standards, including setbacks. The rationale for this action was neighborhood concern resulting from a planning director determination stating that because the NPA didn't address accessory structure setbacks, the zoning code requirement of three feet would be used rather than the NPA's primary structure, a rear yard setback of thirty-five feet. Pursuant to the board's direction, staff has been working on addressing the following areas, establishing neighborhood, or establishing development standards for accessory structures, clarifying development standards for habitable accessory structures or accessory dwelling units, and as the border properties outside of the NPA use the zoning code requirements, perhaps allowing yard areas along the border of the NPA to be regulated by the setbacks of the less restrictive zoning code. Planning staff sought input from the Arden Oaks property owners through a public outreach process, which included informational mailers to all property owners, two surveys, and two informational meetings. The second survey received a fifty-five percent response rate and was used to establish the contents of the proposed ordinance. I should also note that the two community meetings were very well attended, and those, at those meetings, staff provided information, answered questions, and provided clarification on the intent of the amendments. Want to spend a moment reviewing the key amendments to the NPA. First, the ordinance does not change development standards or setbacks for primary structures. It does expand the setback standards for primary structures to include habitable structures, including accessory dwelling units. The ordinance does establish a twenty-foot rear and side yard setback for all non-habitable accessory structures. Second, the ordinance clarifies that non-habitable accessory structures includes all structures found in the zoning code, and goes a step further to clearly delineate the structures commonly found in the Arden Oaks neighborhood, such as pools, sheds, and tennis and sport courts. Third, the ordinance allows properties along the border of the NPA that have a rear or side yard that is adjacent to a street or property outside of the NPA to use the less restrictive zoning code setback standards for non-habitable accessory structures. The proposed ordinance was presented to both the Arden Arcade CPAC and the Planning Commission, both of which approved the request by unanimous vote. Staff is recommending the board recognize the exempt status of the project pursuant to sequo, and approve the ordinance amending the Arden Oaks NPA. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and I'm aware that there's Arden Oaks residents here to provide testimony to.
Okay, questions, Bruce?
I don't have any questions. Let's hear some speakers.
Okay, sure. Okay, thanks, Chris.
We have two speakers, Jay Freeman and Eric Stiff.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jay Freeman. I'm a longtime resident of Arden Oaks and a member of the board of the Neighborhood Association. I just want to take a moment to thank staff for their outreach efforts. Chris described them very well. I think they have achieved a consensus on this matter, and, and that's why I support it, and I think there's been no, no negative comments that I've heard about the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Okay, Eric? Good afternoon, Eric.
I'm Eric Stiff. I'm also with the Arden Oaks Neighborhood Association, and I also am here mainly to, to offer my sincere appreciation to both Supervisor Peters, who I know worked with staff and had staff work with us at the Arden Oaks Neighborhood Association, to really move this forward. It was a very good opportunity, I think, for staff in the planning department to see a little bit of our neighborhood, especially with our meetings, which, again, our board has fifteen members, we have a wide variety of opinions. Usually when I'm here, I'm coming here to speak on behalf of the board, and often against maybe a project looking for a variance, or sometimes for a variance because there are special circumstances. And I think there's a view that the Neighborhood Association has one view, and it doesn't. We have fifteen people that really represent our neighborhood, and it turns out this amendment is exactly the same change that was proposed in two thousand and four, after three years of polling of our neighborhood, about changing the setbacks for accessory structures from thirty-five feet to twenty feet. This current issue came up when suddenly it was going to be three feet, and nobody in our neighborhood had ever contemplated three feet, and it turned a bad situation into a very good situation, in that now I think we're reflectively making a change that balances people that would like it to stay at thirty-five feet, people, some people, I'm sure, wanted it at three feet. We have two people on our board that wanted it at three feet, but I think overall, most people thought twenty feet was a good compromise, and I think this came up to a good result. this came up to a good result. And I mainly want to emphasize the fact that neighborhood associations, like Arden Oaks Neighborhood Association, we all have full-time jobs. We have other things we do, but our overall goal is towards our neighborhood. We're not here against every project or for every project. We're here to try to speak for our neighborhoods. And for the most part, I would hope that planning and the Board of Supervisors realizes that all of our neighborhood associations, especially those that are active, are in a position to help you end up to find a consensus. Because you can't always talk to people, but you can usually find the neighborhood associations, and we really are there to try to solve problems, not create problems. Again, thank you to everyone.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Jay, both of you for being down here, for your work on your board as well, and thanks to colleague Susan Peters for her work and leadership in this regard, too. So, I'll turn to you, Susan.
I don't, I don't have any questions about it. I wanted to thank staff. We had some spirited conversations in my office, and it all worked out fine, and they're happy and the neighborhood's happy, and I think they did a really good job of working with the neighborhoods. So, thank you both very much for that. And I'll move approval.
Okay. All right. Moving second, then, to approve the staff recommendation. Compliments to all the folks involved. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Good work. Okay, next item.
Okay, so now we're at item 75. This is the Ogden Ranch Project. General Plan Amendment, Community Plan Amendment, rezone, large lot tentative subdivision map, phasing plan, small lot tentative subdivision map, special development permit, design review, and easement abandonment for a property located at 8240 Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the board. You actually heard this item on June 6th, at which time you approved the mitigated neg deck, the MMRP, and the general plan amendment, and continued the rest of the items for adoption today. This does create 205 single-family lots, along with a fair amount of open space along Laguna Creek and Trails. And so the item is here for adoption today, and we do have an applicant representative in the audience if you have any questions.
All right, any questions of staff? Applicant wish to address? Nope, okay. All right, with that, then.
I move approval.
Moving second, then, to, moving second to approve the recommendations outlined in the staff report, final adoption approvals, certification, ordinances. I have nothing further to do, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that concludes the items. We have some appointments, and I know we have an off-agenda speaker as well, and we have supervisor comments, county executive comments, too. So, all right, we save the appointments.
Yeah.
Nominations.
That would be item 76. You are continuing to July 25th, the North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You are continuing to August 8th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Children's Coalition, Consumers Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, you have the Adult and Aging Commission, Ms. Natoli.
Okay, the, I believe you're going to continue the, until August 8th. There's interviews pending later this month, as well as in early August, so we'll hold those over till August 8th.
Okay, for the Carmichael Recreation and Park District?
I would like to reappoint Michael Rockenstein to the district.
And can, and you still have one remaining seat open, so when would you like to continue that to?
August 22nd?
22nd, okay. Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District?
Like to reappoint Bernard Donnelly.
And continue the remaining?
Same date.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Frost?
Reappoint Anthony Abdel Sayed, and move the remaining to July 25.
Okay. Sacramento County Mental Health Board?
For me?
Ms. Peters?
Okay, I'd like to nominate David Lopez as a public interest representative.
Okay. Then we have the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Ms. Peters?
For District 3, I'd like to reappoint Angelica Hernandez.
And then, Ms. Frost?
For Sunrise Ricken Park?
We're still on the Treasury Oversight Committee. You have one seat.
The one above Sunrise.
Um, the one above, I'm sorry.
Treasury Oversight Committee.
I'm lost. Do you see it?
I'm right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have an appointment, so I guess I need to move that.
Do you want to continue that?
Continue that to July 25th.
Okay. Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Ms. Frost?
And that would be reappoint Shannon Brown, and reappoint Reed Lingwood.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, that takes your nominations. With that, then, we'll go to, we have off-agenda speaker, and then we'll come back to the county executive board members. Paul Pridler, Paul, if I hopefully pronounced that correctly, and we'll allow up to five minutes, off-agenda items, so just...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I was just gonna say, we allow five minutes on off-agenda items.
That's fine. I hope to not take that much time.
All right.
Good afternoon, supervisors and staff. Thanks for wasting your time with me here, but there may be a county tax, real estate tax billing thing that you don't know about. I don't think you do. Anyway, many people in this room, including you, own real estate in Sacramento, and you, along with me, pay the tax bill every time it comes. Does anybody pay the tax bill without getting the tax bill? Does anybody do that? I bought my first home here in 1965 in Arden Park for $14,800. I wish it was still that cheap, but it isn't. And then I built my first apartment complex on Fulton Avenue in 1969. I've owned a lot of other properties since. I've bought a lot of other properties in Sacramento County since, and I've built a lot of other apartments in Sacramento County since. I have always paid all of my taxes, my real estate taxes, as soon as I get the bill. Not as soon, but before it was due. I've never been late. In any event, I, I bought another apartment last August 16th, and when you buy them, you always know there's going to be a tax bill to be paid by December 15th. And so we were withholding some money back and not giving it to our investors, holding it back in our, in our account, so that when we got the tax bill, we would pay it. Anyway, I got very busy. My outsourced property manager got very busy, and we never got a tax bill. But we didn't notice we never got a tax bill until I received the tax bill in, on February 22nd. I called the director, I, I, I either wrote or called the Director of Finance, I can't remember right now, but, but they told me that we have to pay the tax bill whether or not we received it. And he told me he didn't mail it to me until February 20th. I think it was like the 18th, but I received it on the 22nd. So anyway, we, we received it, and we paid it, and in that bill was a, how much was it? It was $2,160.64 penalty because it was late. It was late. But I paid it like within three days after I received the bill. And I'm not complaining right now about the penalty. I paid the penalty. I always paid my taxes. This is the first time I had to pay a penalty, but I paid it. But the, the situation is, is this little yellow sheet that comes along when you buy a piece of property in Sacramento County, they send you the recorded deed after you, I don't know how long, maybe a week or two or a month after you record the property, you get the, a copy of the stamped recorded deed. In the back of it is a number of papers, and this is one of them. And in this paper, it says, for the first time that I realized it after all these years, that you need to pay the taxes whether or not you receive the tax bill. It's your responsibility, and you'll be late if you don't receive the tax bill and don't pay the taxes, you will pay a penalty. It says it right here. But I didn't know that. I don't think you know that. And they told me they mailed the tax bill to the seller, not to me, to the seller who was dead in Hawaii. That's why he never received the tax bill. The Director of Finance told me that. So I paid it three days after I got it, and I'm not going to complain about me, but I don't think that's a good policy to have, and I don't think you would like that policy. I think, you know, if they don't mail the tax bill, they had from August, the tax bills, I don't know when they come out. They come out like in October or November. They have to be paid by December 10th. They had plenty of time. They mailed me the grand deed, but they didn't mail me the tax bill. They had plenty of time to send the tax bill. If they don't send it, it kind of seems like it's maybe a new way to get income for the county. I don't think that's what you people mean. Anyway, I just want to let you know about it, and maybe you could change that so that if they don't, someone doesn't receive the tax bill, they shouldn't be at least penalized, as long as they pay it when they receive it. Does that make any sense, or am I way off base here?
No. And I think there is a time when the rolls close, and so that's, you know, that's the, you know, when they, that's the mailing that we sent out. But, I mean, recordation of documents, and that does get transmitted. Obviously, you got the bill, you know, you know, months after it was due, in February. And I don't know what state law provides for, obviously, it's pointed out in that chart, but I guess if you'd ask, maybe everybody here knew. I didn't know that if you didn't get the bill, you were then, you know, going to get penalized. There are some circumstances. Seems to me that where there are transactions, and, you know, I, you know, you have to have a point, cutoff point for mailing, but then I don't know how many transactions occur after that, and...
Well, I've done a lot of these, and I've never not received a tax bill.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess that's a good historical reference. So, I don't know, Mr. Gill, was there something that we could get ahold of Mr. Lamara and take a look at? And I think that, you know, let's see what, if there's any...
I'll do that.
But again, I think, as Paul points out, it may be going forward, you know, maybe there's nothing to be done about this, but it's certainly an issue that...
It just seems like something that shouldn't be there, to me. I'm not a supervisor, and I appreciate your time, and I'll get out of here.
No, no, well, thank you. This is what this is all about. So, we appreciate you bringing your concerns here, and I've got your address here, but if we can get contact information to Mr. Gill, our county executive, you don't have, you weren't needed to put a phone number here, so if we can have an exchange, don't need to do it over the microphone.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll do our best to follow up with you, so.
Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you, Paul. Thanks for sitting with us this afternoon, too, so.
Thank you.
So if you'll stand by just a moment, we're going to conclude here, and Mr. Gill can get some information from him, so. All right, with that, then, we're going to go to county exec comments, and then board supervisor comments, and...
No comments.
No comments? Okay, all right. So we'll start down this end.
Close session.
Yes, we are. Sorry. That's the question was answered. Ms. Frost? Okay, I just, very quickly, I know that we had scheduled, I guess, for next week, our board committee to have trans occupancy tax workshop, and some things, you know, the committee was working on that, but there was a change in the date that went out to the applicants that wasn't shared with board members. Because as recently as this weekend, conversation with folks, I kept saying the 18th, you need to make sure you were available. And if we're going to do a new date, that needs to be settled upon so that all board members, even though the committee's going to be transacting the hearing...
No, we did send out a cancellation, Flo. We are working on a new date.
Okay, the cancellation went out when?
It went out yesterday.
That's what I'm saying.
It was after, no, absolutely, it was afterward.
No, yeah. And that's fine, we were, your new date. It's just that, you know, that cancellation, apparently, that was, the applicants were told about it, and I actually had a bit of an argument with somebody. I said, "You need to be ready on the 18th." "Oh, no, it's being continued." I said, "Continued when?" They said, "We got a notice back in June about it being continued." I said, "Our board left the session saying it was going to be on July 18th."
Don, this is, this is the classic situation, where when board members get involved, the dates in the staff reports get amok. So, this week, when we did decide to push it off to the end of August to get all the work done, we should have notified the board.
That's fine.
I forgot about it. So, as soon as I, Monday morning, I, I asked Flo to send out a notice, so. My apologies for that.
That's why I was, I was arguing with somebody on Sunday about it, and I was, kept telling them they needed to be, be here on the 18th. They said, "No, we don't." And I said, "How do you know that?" It's, okay. All right, so, we'll pick another date in August, and we'll get picked out. So, with that, we'll go to closed session. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be real long, so we'll be upstairs.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.